Joseph.
Okay, everyone, I think we're gonna get started at six o'clock.
Okay, everyone, I think we're gonna get started at six o'clock.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Engineering and Public Works Committee of the Hole Number One for 2021. There is an agenda in front of you. Do I have a mover of the agenda? Mayor Bell, seconded by Counselor Awa. Are there comments or questions to the agenda as presented? Noting none, we'll have a vote, all in favor. Perfect, and we're unanimous. There are no minutes. Are there any declarations of interest? Also noting none, there are no deferred business, so we'll move on directly to number five, a new business, and the 2020 City of Akaluit Annual Water Report. Joseph, are you on the phone? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, can everyone hear me?
So far, so good. I'll let you take the floor.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight. I guess, to start, if you all have, I guess, some information, I know Amy had provided her tenure, I guess, some information pertaining to the report. But to summarize, for 2020, from a water demand standpoint, 2020 proved to be a lot better of a year as compared to 2019 and 2018. There's a figure there, it's labeled as Table One, or I should say Table, as Table One in the report, that highlights monthly totals for the, sorry, 2020, 2019, and 2018. And as you could see, when we look at the total annual water consumption or water demand, we're in the average of about sixteen, or sorry, fifteen to sixteen percent in terms of less water consumption when we compare our 2020 consumption of just over one million cubic meters of water as compared to 1.2 million in 2019 and 1.19 in 2018. And then similarly, if we look at that on a daily average, it translates to roughly the same thing. That's where we got essentially our annual values. But looking at it on a daily average range, we were consuming approximately one point, or sorry, 2,800 cubic meters of water per day as compared to just shy of 3,300 in 2019. And yeah, 3,271, if I call it per se, in 2018. So overall, lower water consumption in 2020. Going to monitoring, so obviously since the 2018 emergency permitting and amendment of the city's water license, we've been monitoring the water levels in Lake Geraldine as a result of the seasonal pumping efforts at Apex River. So Figure Two in the report kind of provides a little bit of a highlight when we compare the effects of seasonal pumping. And in the graph, you'll see there, the blue line indicates seasonal pumping in 2020 as comparison to seasonal pumping in 2019. So roughly at the end, we had, if I have some numbers here, in 2019, we had about a deficit of 54,000 cubic meters of water. So again, that, I guess what that translates to is we had capacity to pump an additional 54,000 to top up the reservoir to its max elevation. And in 2020, there was about a 43,000 cubic meter deficit. All to say that there was sufficient water in both those calendar years to sustain water supply for the winter period. So that, that's a little bit of a highlight of monitoring that's been ongoing at Lake Geraldine. With respect to actions and strategies from last year, and a lot of this will somewhat highlight the impacts that these actions, I'll say, and strategies have had on water demand as shown in the first table that I discussed regarding annual and average daily water demand. The city did continue a strong push with respect to public promotion of conservation efforts throughout the municipality. There was a strong push as well with respect to monitoring the leaks and actioning immediate repair of any leaks within the utility or distribution system. So Table Three, or just to highlight, kind of provides a summary of all the various repairs that were conducted. This all highlights repairs done by utilitor and local contractors as well. Again, primarily due to leaks at mains or at access vaults and whatnot. A lot of the focus was put within the communities of Lower Akaluit, the core downtown area, Plateau, Happy Valley, and a few localized repairs, I'll say, in Tundra Ridge and within the airport, Federal Road, I'll say, Loop or area of town. Lastly, the report highlights some of our major capital initiatives that focus on the water's efforts for sustaining water supply for the long term. So as mentioned earlier with respect to monitoring that we're doing at Lake Geraldine, and as everyone, I believe, is aware of our annual efforts with respect to topping up the reservoir during the spring for shet. We obviously initiated pumping of water from Apex to Lake Geraldine last year, similarly to what was done in 2018 and 2019. To say that efforts actually went really well, obviously, we weren't in emergency mode as we were in 2018 and 2019. To say this was more of a planned approach this year. But this will continue on until the city's current water license expires in 2026. So again, just to summarize, the amendment that the city was granted by the Minnibid Water Board in 2019 allows for seasonal pumping up until 2026. And going into the next project, or I'll say, I'll skip a project here, but just briefly highlight, that'll somewhat tie into the long-term water project, which I won't delve into much, I understand it's a new business item here on today's agenda. But again, the water report does highlight some of the efforts that were done last year with respect to planning for the eventual detailed design and construction of the project. And then the last one I will highlight is the utilitor water distribution upgrade. So just to highlight that capital project and somewhat, you know, how it ties into the annual water report. The city is focusing a lot of its efforts right now to try to identify where problems are within the city, if there's means of optimization, whether that's, you know, implementing, you know, circulation, obviously controlling leaks, or using new technology or techniques, I'll say, in terms of design to capture some of the challenges that we've been noticing over the last few years, primarily as a result of climate change and its impacts on permafrost degradation. So this project here, as it stands right now, is focusing on building a calibrated model for the city in order to understand how the distribution system actually functions, and then using that model as a tool to start implementing, I'll call it, sub-projects from this umbrella project in terms of initiatives that we can do to optimize specific, I'll say, district water supply systems, whether it's in Lower Akaluit, Plateau, Happy Valley, the Federal Road area. So the main, or I'll say, first task is this water model, and then from there, we'll be looking at prioritizing specific optimization projects, which we'll look at, again, improving water distribution to ensure reliable water supply to the community. That's it that I had in terms of an overall summary of the 2020 Annual Water Report. Were there any questions or comments?
Thank you very much for that presentation. And just as an information item for the council, the actual report will be, these tables that are in front of you were drawn from the report, and the actual report will be tabled at the next council meeting, pending translation. So yes, there are questions. Counselor Awa?
Thank you, Chairperson. I may have to speak in this to him to understand, I believe. My question might be three-way after reason. It seems that we have been not using, we've been using less water than 2019. Would it be causing by, what? But my, could be causing by having fires, Akaluit house fires, all that? Would that be causing using more water? I believe that the people, residents, not using more or less. But I believe there should be, could be because of the fire or because of the pipe leak. What is the cause? Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much. In terms of the translation, you should be able to speak Inuktitut, and it will be, he's actually getting the English translation through the phone system, so he should be able to understand you if you'd prefer to ask your questions in Inuktitut. Joseph, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. If I understand correctly, I guess the question was is, if, if obviously, you know, the case where there are fires in town, the impact that that has on demand, and whether that could have been a case, you know, as to why maybe there was more consumption in previous years than in 2020, similarly with leaks? From what I could say, it's hard for me to say whether, you know, the reason why 2020 was a better year than 2019 as opposed to, yeah, 2019 and 2018. I can't really comment on the fact that there were less fires. What I do understand is that in terms of initiatives that the Public Works Department has been doing on the repair front, is that it has been implementing more of a stringent monitoring program in terms of trying to identify your pinpoint leaks as soon as they arise, and then developing a game plan to actually identify where within the system the leak is, and then trying to tackle the leak on a timely, timely fashion or timely basis. Not to say that wasn't done in the past, but I do understand that those are some of the efforts that have been implemented from last year. Not to mention as well, if we're talking conservation, I understand too that the city did impose or had for a few years a water ban. Not to say that that had a great impact, obviously, but I do believe that, you know, some of the communications that have been issued in terms of, you know, recommendations on, or tips, if I'll say, on, you know, how to be water-wise, you know, things as simple as, you know, promotion of not running a faucet constantly, say, if you're, you know, brushing your teeth, or recommendations or tips on, you know, how to be water-wise if you're looking to take a shower, something like that. So I believe efforts like that have obviously played a factor as well, just as everything else that the city's been trying to implement. But on the stance of fires per se, that will definitely have an impact on consumption. But I can't comment right now to say if that may have been a reason, or maybe one of the reasons as to why consumption was less last year as compared to, say, 2019 or 2018. But something we could definitely look into.
Thank you very much for that response. You can't see me, or maybe you can, I don't know if you're watching, but I smirked when you said that they were, you couldn't speak to them having been addressed like that in the past, because they definitely weren't addressed as quickly in the past. I think that's a huge impact on our water conservation, is that we are now addressing leaks as quickly as possible, understanding that they are a huge cause of the water shortage in this community in Lake Geraldine. Does that answer all your questions, Counselor Awa? Then Mayor Bell, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might be a little bit confused, and that's why I'm gonna ask the question. So we're talking about this document, of course, but the executive summary, is that for the next item, the verbal update, or is that for this item as well?
That's some information that you're, you know, you're welcome to read, but it's not something that's necessary for this presentation today.
Okay, but I have questions about stuff on this. Oh, okay, good. So skipping over water and going to the solid waste management plan, not plan, but the update, on the second page of the document, it says here that there is approximately two kilometers of road completed to the new landfill. But if my memory serves me correct, I believe that it was supposed to be three kilometers completed by the end of winter, or the start of winter last year, and that there was a monetary, I don't know what they call them, but there's a fee, fine, that when they don't complete up to certain percentages. So I'm wondering, is my memory correct, and it was supposed to be three kilometers? And if it is three kilometers, are they, are the developers being charged the fee, fine, sorry?
Amy, go ahead.
I would have to look into what the milestone was and what the actual tender documents state in terms of the penalties for that project, but we can look into that, and the project managers are definitely on top of those things and what the requirements are for that contract. May I? I can also add that they may have been, some of the work, they may have had to stop the work early, given the weather and a couple of other challenges that they had, and some access to material at that time of year. So, but we will look into that further. Thank you.
Sorry, I keep screwing that up. And how am I gonna skip? It should be Mayor Bell. If I just push it, will it work?
It's on. Yeah, so you can actually just, on the screen, touch the person's name, and then it will, and then put it next. That's fine. I was trying to look for the tender documents, because I remember when it went out, I read through the summary, and I do remember it being supposed to be being three kilometers, but I could be wrong. And I can't even remember the fine, but I think it was like $1,000 or $1,500 for uncompleted work. But anyways, now it says here, "Construction of both facilities are planned to begin the summer of 2021." Neither of those tenders have been out. I watch the city tender page very frequently. So I'm wondering when they will be out, and if they are out now, like say, if we put them out tomorrow, is any of the workers gonna, sorry, any of the companies gonna be able to complete it? Get information, get supplies on sea lift?
I want that same question answered. I'm gonna ask that we wait until E on the agenda, and we'll answer it then. We'll give Amy a chance to have that answer prepared for when we get to that spot on the agenda. Is that all right? Counselor Fawcett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's pretty, you know, positive report, for sure. We've gone down from 2019. In 2020, we went down 200,000 approximately cubic meters in our water usage. That's fantastic. And my question is kind of simple. Is this gonna be the year that we finally let people wash their cars?
I mean, I don't get to be the one who decides, but I would say absolutely not. I don't think that there is any reason to switch our car wash ban until we have a solution to the water, which we don't. Next item, we'll talk about that, the long-term water solution, but that is not yet funded, and it's not yet a solution until it's put in place. And my opinion would be, no, no, there's no good reason to use potable water to wash vehicles in the city. You know, you can wash your car, nobody will ever stop you from doing that. You get water from another source and use that. But that's my opinion, it's not a decision of council. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Chair. It's really surprising to see that the tables, that 2020 was a better year than the previous two years. So it's also really good to see Table Three, all the repairs to the utilitor distribution. My question is, how long will these leak repairs? Like, I don't know much about utilities, systems, not a technician. So I'm just wondering, when we repair a leak, how long, how long of a life would that, does that repair have? And versus, like, I'm just trying to think, long, long term?
I think that's a great question, and I'm gonna add to it before I let Joseph answer it, because I also had a question about that. I'm wondering how many of these leaks were historic, and how many of them just happened in 2020 and then were repaired in 2020? And I think further to your question, I'd like to know, like, how much permafrost shifting is the cause of these leaks? And, you know, maybe that can't be answered just off the bat, but I'd be interested in Joseph's sort of opinion on whether this is being caused by climate change and by permafrost shifting, as we've often stated it would be. Joseph, did you have an answer that you could provide?
Yeah, I can provide some feedback. It is a great question, Counselor. A little hard to answer, but I guess from my understanding, working closely with the utilitor department on this, it's hard to put a timeline in terms of how good, say, a repair is because there are a lot of variables that that can impact. You know, even in terms of, you know, at time of year the work is done. Is it being done at a time when, I'll say, in the summer or in the fall, depending on the condition of the permafrost? Given that obviously in the summer, it's a lot warmer than, say, in late fall or whatnot, or even the wintertime. But a lot of, a lot of the issues we have been noticing, I'll say, per se, at connections, at access faults and manholes, it is showing sign that it is presumably due to permafrost degradation, so there is some sort of differential settlement. It's hard to quantify that, but what the city has been doing, or I'll say, is looking to initiate this year through some third-party funding it's got from the federal government in partnership with the National Research Council in Ottawa, is actually looking at or prioritizing, I'll say, the installation of instrumentation in some localized areas of town where we do have some historic knowledge of, say, you know, leaks that have been caused at these access faults or manholes. And then through the expertise of the National Research Council, we'd be looking at installing some instrumentation that can actually measure and monitor, if you want to call it settlement, as a result of, say, permafrost degradation. There is obviously as well instrumentation that will monitor the temperature of the soil as well to see if, you know, that is primarily a cause of these failure modes. And then ultimately, the goal of, you know, providing a recommendation on new design techniques that probably uh, or prioritizing, I'll say, the, uh, the installation of, of, of instrumentation in some localized areas of town where we do have some historic knowledge of, say, um, you know, leaks that have been caused at these access faults or manholes. And then through the expertise of, of the National Research Council, um, we'd be looking at installing some instrumentation that can actually measure and monitor, uh, if you wanna call it settlement as a result of, say, permafrost degradation. Um, there is obviously as well instrumentation that, that will monitor the, the temperature of the soil as well to see if, you know, that, that is primarily a cause of, of, of these failure modes. Uh, and then ultimately the goal of, you know, providing a recommendation on, on new design techniques that, that probably should be implemented within, you know, Arctic communities to, to combat this new, um, this new mechanism, if you wanna say a failure that maybe we may not have noticed, I'll say, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. Um, but what I could do, I, I could get some information um, to the question that was, uh, that was posed on, you know, are these repairs historic? Is this something that's recurring every single year? At, say, specific, you know, locations, if we'll say, or if this is, say, a one-off? Um, in, in a lot of cases as well, what we've noticed is that in, in some instances where we're talking about a leak at a, at a specific house or unit, um, the, the leak is actually caused based with uh, the fact that the connection of the water service line to the unit is actually the city's old uh, design detail. Um, the new design detail, I believe, was updated in two thousand and four. So the issue is, is that, you know, a lot of these older units, um, that were obviously, you know, constructed uh, pre-two thousand and four have the old detail and, and, and this design change was implemented based on the fact of, of identifying, you know, this, this issue with, with that design on, on how the water service line connects to the water main. Um, so the idea is, is if, if that is, uh, uh, a leak that has been identified, then then the new, I'll say, installation detail is implemented. Um, and again, to say if we've noticed issues after the fact with the new installation, um, I, I don't have that answer now, but I, this is something I could relay back to utilitor to see if, if this is something that they've noticed in the field, uh, with, with their experiences.
Perfect, thank you. Does that answer your questions, Councillor Flaherty? Or did you wanna follow up?
Um, uh, thank you, Chair, and, uh, thank you for, uh, Joseph, for your, uh, uh, comment and response. Uh, that's, it, that's good to know. I'm, I, I would like to learn more about, uh, this issue. Um, like I said previously, uh, my knowledge is, is really weak in engineering and public works. Um, but, uh, I know that, um, um, there are some, uh, residents, uh, that I can think of, like, like throughout the years that, uh, have, um, I'm not, I'm not too sure if it's leaks or if it's groundwater, um, but especially for, let's say, lower base area, this Sijangga area. You, you mentioned, uh, the new design of the utilitor back in two thousand and four. Um, I know a neighbor, um, uh, close, close to me, I, I had to, I'm, I'm, I'm not too sure, I sh- I should have been more prepared, but, uh, I know she had a little loader go to her unit uh, be- because of a water issue last summer, so, uh, I'm just curious. Uh, that, that's why I was asking how long the leak, uh, fixes will last for, if that can be known, uh, or if, if there's a plan, uh, like a bigger plan to just, uh, uh, up, update the utili- u- utilitor.
Like, the, the, I guess if I can provide, I guess, some feedback to that councillor, like, I guess the challenge here now is, it's, I, I guess, you know, i- if I could speak on, you know, this is more on utilitor, public works and, and their efforts on, you know, how they go about finding leaks and then obviously, you know, uh, implementing a plan, you know, to, to repair it. Um, it, it really is trying to find a needle in a haystack. Uh, I will say that the system in a Callowit is not as, I'll say, conventional as to what you might find, or I, I shouldn't say conventional, but, uh, in terms of the technology, um, it, it doesn't use, let's say, a community down south might have. Um, but speaking, and I, I, I didn't really highlight much of it, but that, uh, that utilitor distribution upgrades project that I spoke to as part of, uh, you know, some of the, the, the broader capital initiatives that, that the city's looking to somewhat pursue, one of, one of the, I'll say mandates as part of that project is trying to implement some sort of, of an instrumentation system, what you would find in, say, a community down south. Uh, and what I mean by instrumentation would be something as simple as just pressure transmitters um, at, say, you know, localized areas or areas, you know, spread out within the distribution system. So that all of those, 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 like, that instrumentation is all, obviously reported back to a central control room where an operator can, can see this live, uh, twenty-four seven, and, and if there's an issue where, say, the pressure drops below some set point, um, that's, I'll say, you know, programmed within the system. Um, some sort of a monitoring system is then indicated or, or sent to utilitor to let them know, hey, there's a leak within, you know, this section of pipe or within this, you know, localized area, so they have a better chance as, as to what is causing this and, and, you know, a better chance of, of trying to find it. Uh, whereas right now, a lot of this, from what I understand, is, you know, through word of mouth from, from residents that, you know, may may call utilitor or the city and say, hey, you know, I've, I've lost pressure. Um, and then, you know, it might take an investigation to go out there and see what particular unit that is, and are other units within that community, uh, dealing with the same thing, and then from there, trying to pinpoint, you know, is this localized to just your service line? Um, or is this something that, that actually might be impacting, you know, uh, the community on a larger scale, if it actually might be an issue o- on the water main system as well? Um, so that, that is something that the city is looking to, to initiate, uh, I'll bet, you know, thought right now is more of, of a planning stage, um, but long-term, obviously trying to, you know, uh, obtain some sort of cost level estimate and, you know, uh, get some kind of a technical, if I'll say, you know, understanding of what it would take to implement a system like that in the Callowit. And then from there, starting to plan for it in terms of, you know, prioritization and, and whatnot.
Thank you for that response. And, no, in addition, I guess what you're talking about made me think, when we don't know exactly where the leaks are quite often, especially if it's February, uh, it's either very expensive to go exploratory digging on the city, and I, I mean, very expensive. Or we, we don't do it sometimes because we know that we won't find it at that time, and we could wait until April or May when the ground's softer and it'll be cheaper, so then we're wasting water, which is also an expensive assortment, so that's a complication that is created by the fact that we can't pinpoint those leaks in the way that was just described. Uh, you're good with that? Councillor Natta, go ahead.
Taman na, so, uh, nunna kaanga ne, im- imakata, kertatomi. Taman na, pidiutu kena tukso lo, ike ne, kua shumma, ma na ukiyo. Seks- seks tumi lune, nunna ilone, ana yume, pitakane. Taman na, shonai tinun, ishuma unna uyo, imak, imak, ilak, ka yuma rakti. Uh, ma, ma yara uni, kumilo, tapano lo, ike uktakata, akshuluni. Uh, imaka, apakutu ranga, ikiro. Ukiyotakutu me, tona ga, pidiutu kiliwo, kua shukaya ga, taman na, ukiyotakutu, shururangi. Shururangi ka, apakilunga, shuro, kalunane, tana ke, kevi yata, kua shukaniata. Shuro, kalunane, nunna ilone, shururiki, imakamata, ubugelwe, kaanga ne, uh, imakata, taman na, uh, imaki saranam, bivala kuta, balaio, tapamata.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Natta? Uh, Councillor Awa?
Yenameki shikota, um, apakutu ngito. Uh, ukojigiakuti, tui ndakta. Um, imaka, kaojigaya kaya kota. Inna, bale si ku, nunna kutu vini ngan, idlo kutu vini ngan. Uh, si bisikut, idlo kutu vini ngan. Tano nga, walro mu, shururak takamana, silamitimi. Amma, anna vingmit, tabunga, um, ilinyagvya mu. Inuksu ilinyagvya ngan, shururak takamingma, silamitimi. Taka, shogolok sima bal. Kanga akik tolok sima bal, kanutigi, atitigilakpan. Apakiga yakuvi. Shogolok sima ngipata, akahutu, ati ngatanisakpan, sati ngatanisakpan. Taman na, pi, piunasamila. Um, imio, uko shakabila, tanga, pangakta, bilyaku, kuluotamana. Silami shururakamna, taman na, kalugni, kanukiya. Uh, tana, ukoju, juju tui na, amma, imaka, ilanit, shogaga yuma ta, ka ilanakta, inna. Um, ulobeng, kina yakuwa, akiti nganito. Uh, pikun, omayuraga yikut. Amma, amma rokub, tita vikvini ngat, inina. Akahutama, shogakatlo, akahutama, akik towakshuni, sungman. Taman kwa, apakutu raga yipata, tukesi yuna kota, uh, imaka, piunaksame, akik shibaliya yuna yaktu. Amma, kinkunlakpa, unna uko shakadu. Ullo me ulakto, makuti, mankuni ngan. Uh, pekutinik, uh, shogayanginaksanik, sekumiyaninaksanik. Sanayokaunak singman. Uh, tukiliu tiliu kapu jakve, uwayait, ka pangit, ilanit sekumiyatu, ilan sekumiyanit. Uh, imaka, taman kwa, shogayanginakse, kuwayanginakse, kina kta wukpata, shururak singok titarutik. Uh, tana, ukojigaya kuta, tukshikui, yenameki shikota.
Thank you, Councillor Awa. Uh, just on the note of the above-ground pipes, I mean, I, I don't have an answer for whether they break as often, I, I'm assuming they don't, but they're certainly easier to repair, uh, and cheaper to repair if they do. Unfortunately, they cause, they're, they're both eyesores and they're in the way sometimes when they're above ground, but past that, they're certainly cheaper and easier. And it is definitely something that we need to think about as we replace, uh, infrastructure, as to whether that's, you know, partially or part of the solution in some way. Councillor Fawcett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, this conversation is kinda rejogged my memory over something that I heard from the rumor mill around the Callowit. Um, has there ever been any pr- proof or, uh, any indication that the material that was used to fill in over the pipes has caused damage or caused leaks to the pipes? Because the, you know, you hear a lot of things, people talking without any proof whatsoever, uh, in small communities, and one of the things that I've heard from more than one person is that, uh, workers on the ground have found during the repair or replacement of these pipes, inappropriate material packed on top of the pipes that has caused damage to them. So has the city ever received any indication from anybody who's done this work? Uh, that the material used to pack in these pipes was improper or has caused damage itself?
Amy, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, so we have heard of, uh, some instances where it's assumed that this could be part of the problem, um, especially on service lines, so lines from the road or the city's connection, from the connection to the actual home. Um, and we've noticed slumping, um, sewer lines, um, when there's been, uh, material that hasn't been suitable. Um, we've also, um, observed problems where perhaps there's been a large boulder or rock put on top of, uh, uh, water lines. So, um, for all the city projects, um, you know, we're monitoring those things and, and requiring contractors to use suitable material. Um, but we have found on some of the older lines that there's been some of that, um, especially the service lines.
Go ahead.
Still getting used to the new system. Um, okay, thank you for the explanation. So that kinda confirms that some of these rumors are true then, because that, that's kind of exactly what I was hearing, that people, there were large boulders being found that, that probably shouldn't have been used, or material that shouldn't have been used to pack in these pipes. Uh, I'm sure city administration is, is making sure that any repairs and anything moving forward is being done properly, because this has been identified previously. Um, but, it, you know, using improper material, was, do we know if there was a regulation at the time that wasn't followed by the contractor? Or, or was it just that they had the leeway to make this decision themselves and they just chose to the wrong material?
Amy, do you wanna try that one?
Yeah, so some of those, uh, things are historic, um, and, um, you know, the, the, the city wouldn't have been doing inspections for, for some of those where they were going to homes. Um, they would have had some kind of design guidelines in place, so I can't speak to the actual guidelines that were, that were in place. Um, but, um, we can make sure that, uh, these things are done properly going forward, of course. That's what we aim to do.
And, and Amy, if, if I can, if I can, if I can add to that as well, um, you know, one, one of the major things we've been trying to push, I guess, from the engineering and, and capital projects department as well on our various construction contracts and whatnot, um, i- is, is the availability, um, of, of having a resource in the field to, to monitor this on our major capital projects. Um, and then similarly on developments where the city might not necessarily have as much influence for what a developer might be doing, if you wanna call it, within his sandbox, um, implying new terms and conditions in these development agreements to ensure that there are specific, call it, hold points um, within their, within their contract, if you wanna say, or agreement, where utilitor must come out and, and verify, you know, key things such as backfill or connection to utilitor. And I'll even go as far to say that with the implementation of, um, the territories, I'll say, uh, building code, um, which is, I believe, administered by the chief building official for the territory. Um, they actually have now a mandate as well through the building permit application process um, to actually inspect and verify, uh, work pertaining to, say, a, a development. Um, to actually inspect and verify, uh, work pertaining to, say, a, a development. Um, so like Amy had mentioned, say, in the past where there may have been instances where, we'll say, uh, you know, of, of, of poor backfill for a service line and, you know, um, there having been possibly slop or some sort of settlement due to bad backfill material. Um, now, if you actually look at, you know, the, the responsibility or the mandate of this chief building official, um, they're actually required to actually go out there and inspect this as well. And I believe the whole idea or criteria is just to ensure that there's more oversight on this work. Whereas maybe in the past, um, there hasn't been, kind of, to Amy's point.
Thank you for that. Do you still have a follow-up? Go ahead, maybe. Right there. Did I do it? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, okay, I really appreciate the explanation, Amy, and, and, uh, sorry, the gentleman on the phone, I forget your name. Joseph, Joseph. So, thank you very much for that explanation. It's nice to hear that, you know, it has been identified. It's nice, like, for me to bring this up in a public meeting and have the city kind of, um, either verify these rumors or put them to bed. So like, it's now, we know. Now there's an, there's an answer to that question that's out there in the public. So I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate that, you know, after its identification, there are plans to put systems in place to monitor this moving forward because, you know, in the long run, it does save us a lot of money to do things properly the first time. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just clarifying a little bit on that, that last point. So if I heard correctly from administration, that the issue of the fill seems to primarily be on the service lines from, from our mains to the property, to the houses. Those lines are the, are the responsibility of the homeowners or property owners. Those are not city assets. They're not, city doesn't build it. City's not responsible for it after the fact. So if that's primarily where it's happening and our work is being done properly, it's not ultimately a, a city responsibility. It's, it's the responsibility of homeowners and, and developers to install and, and ensure those lines are filled properly.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions about the 2020 City of Kalawit annual water report that we have had? Noting none. Thank you very much, Joseph. And we will go on to the long-term water supply, item B on your agenda. And this is a verbal update coming from Amy, so I'll pass the mic on to Amy. Oh, Mayor Bell, did you want to speak before that? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Did you want a motion to accept that report?
Uh, yes, please.
I move.
Thank you for that. Moved by Mayor Bell, seconded by Counselor Fawcett. Are there comments or questions to accepting the report that will, or recommending, I guess, to council that the report will be tabled at the council meeting on Tuesday? Yeah, go ahead. Right.
Got to wait for the chair. So what exactly are we accepting? If this table is going to be incorporated into a final report at the next meeting, should we not accept that? Otherwise, we're just accepting a conversation right now.
I think, so I sort of semi-formulated that while we were getting there. But I think we are recommending that, uh, this report be tabled at the next council meeting. So the report will be tabled at the next council meeting and then we'll officially accept it. So that's the motion. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Uh, Amy, if you'd like to continue with B, go ahead.
Thank you. So the long-term water supply is, of course, um, a big project for the city. And, um, we phased the project over several years. Um, so the work plan for this year for the long-term water supply is the preliminary engineering design study. The objective of this study is to define the infrastructure that will be designed and constructed as part of the execution phase of this project. Um, we have a direction on the long-term storage alternative as approved by council. So if you recall the, um, the presentation about the, um, the reservoir that would be up next to the, or near the, um, Lake Geraldine. Um, however, decision still needs to be made on the source for the long-term water supply. So as you know, work has been done on assessing the Silver Granal River. And, uh, we just received a report, uh, water balance assessment on the unnamed lake. That was just completed the end of March. And so this is just being reviewed right now by a project management team and the city staff. And we anticipate bringing the water supply options, uh, to council within the next month um, for a decision on the source. Um, and so a couple of other things that are happening this, uh, this year. Um, or again, the purpose of this project is to secure the secondary water source, as you know. Um, and to make sure all of the city's needs for its long-term water demands can be met. So just backing up a little bit, to date, EXP, it's an engineering firm that's working with us, um, completed the pre-feasibility or options analysis for the long-term storage, um, which council already approved. And then we had a water balance assessment, um, recently completed. And a little bit more about this, this is to assess the viability of pumping water from unnamed lake on a long-term basis. Um, so information on, um, a bathymetric study was done to, um, determine the depth of the lake and, and the volume of water that it can hold. Um, as well as, is, the, the, the main question is, is that, is that, um, lake recharging on its own? Or is it just, um, filling up because of the runoff in the area? Um, so those are the types of things that, uh, that were being looked at. And, um, also a, a fish and habitat, fish habitat assessment of the unnamed lake was completed this past February. And this was to confirm the presence of fish and identify any guidelines for water pumping from that lake, uh, in order to mitigate any impact on, on the potential of residential fish, uh, fish population. Um, so we'll bring all of the, um, results from those studies to, to council shortly. And, um, and then those things will factor into the decision on which water source to proceed with. So as part of the work for 2021, um, as part of the approved 2021 capital spending plan, we will engage a consultant to perform the preliminary engineering, uh, design study. And this will further evaluate the technical and construction and financial, environmental and regulatory requirements for the long-term storage, um, assessment, um, analysis. And also consider the supplementation of the drinking water supply. Study will help define the infrastructure that will be designed and constructed as part of the execution phase of this project. And also we will consult with stakeholders. Um, we've identified some stakeholders as being QIA, the, uh, HTA, uh, the water, Nidhavu Water Board, and of course, um, others that, uh, that we may identify through the process to review preliminary plans and listen to feedback, um, with them. And, uh, this year we're also, uh, working on exploring, uh, funding opportunities, um, for the, uh, for this work as it's a very big project. And the overall project, um, we expect, we would like to be able to complete the overall project by 2026 and that coincides with the expiry of the city's water license, current water license. Are there any, uh, any questions right now? myself and Joseph's on the phone and he has a good understanding of this project as well.
Thank you, Amy, for, uh, bringing this up and for presenting to us. Uh, I, I think there definitely are questions. I would preface those questions by talking a bit about the funding that will be necessary to do this project. I think most people on this council already know that this is the most pressing project for the city of Kalawit. It is by far and away the, the, the thing that limits us in terms of every bit of development that we have in the, in the next 10 years and it needs to be sorted out. And I don't know that that is understood by governments above us as, uh, uh, that the situation is as dire as it is. And, and I think that we need to continue with consistent messaging all the time about how important it is that we find an alternative water source and that we fund that alternative water source from, I mean, I, I personally believe federal funds. I think that the, the feds need to realize that this infrastructure is extremely important to the capital city of Nunavut and that it needs to be prioritized, uh, in terms of infrastructure in, in this region. Because it is important to the region that this city be able to continue to develop. It's important to the economic viability of really the entire territory. Uh, it's really important and I think we need to keep saying it all the time. I think Counselor Fawcett is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, but my question is really only on the, the environmental assessment for this project. Sure, we need to learn what's in unnamed lake itself, but is, does the environmental assessment include, uh, terrestrial, terrestrial species? And the impact on them? And does the environmental assessment include Inuit kawi mai tutangi? Um, uh, the, like, interviewing elders, interviewing hunters, interviewing people on routes that are regularly taken? Um, you know, places that are regularly used and will this impact people's travel to those places?
Amy, would you like to respond?
Um, so the primary focus, of course, is, well, the primary focus for these studies that were done this year were, um, the, uh, the fish, um, and the fish habitat. Um, there's not an assessment for the, the land, the land animals, the land mammals. Um, there was an archaeological study done also last year, I think it was last year, the year before. Um, as far as, um, as far as the, um, other items that you mentioned, the IQ. This is part of the stakeholder engagement, uh, process, um, that we will be undertaking this year. Um, and, um, and so once we have a, a preferred option or, um, once we move forward with that, then, um, we will need to, um, make sure that those, uh, things that have been identified through a consultation process are, are, uh, considered. And, um, and, but, uh, it is very important, uh, that this, that we do move this project forward. We do need to identify a source. There are advantages and disadvantages to both of those, uh, water sources. Um, and they're both very important for, for people, um, living here, of course. Um, so, um, so like I said, we will be conducting the engagement sessions with, uh, various stakeholders and open to feedback on any, uh, how that's done. And anyone has any special, uh, requests for that, of course, we could accommodate them.
And, and further, Amy, if I can add, um, to the counselor's question there in terms of some sort of environmental assessment. Um, like Amy had mentioned, nothing was done to date. I guess the idea was that it wasn't really known which direction we're going to be taking. Um, you know, whether we'd be looking at, you know, unnamed lake as a long-term supply. Um, you know, source or, or Sylvia Granal. Um, but I do understand that, you know, given, given the information that's been presented, uh, or at least completed as part of that water balance assessment. And as Amy had mentioned, you know, the intent is that the, the findings of that will be presented to council, uh, hopefully within the next month or so. Uh, the idea is that the preliminary engineering design would be looking to undertake those, if you want to call them due diligence investigations, which would be looking, you know, further into, you know, archaeological impact assessments. Um, you know, if, if there is some sort of obviously over, overland pipeline system. Um, you know, based on the preferred route, if, if we're looking at that, obviously in this, in this next phase of the study. You know, are there, are there known archaeological, you know, sites, uh, within the vicinity of, of this pipe? Uh, we'd be looking at, you know, environmental assessments such as, um, NEFA Phase One. Um, looking at, you know, obviously there probably wouldn't be anything out there in terms of site contamination. But, uh, regardless, something from an initial due diligence phase to, to look at. Um, I know that stuff that, that the Nidhavu Water Board related to, to similar sort of initiatives in the past have, have looked at. And then obviously if we're looking now in terms of, of species or, or animals within the area, um, stuff as such as a physical environment and, and biological environment investigation, where we'd be looking at, you know, what are the impacts of this project now to, to the actual land itself in terms of, um, you know, whether it's, you know, vegetation such as the tundra or, or, or animals or whatnot that, that, you know, obviously, um, are out there within the land. Um, tho- those sorts of assessments would be looked at as part of this next phase of the project. And obviously, so we would be looking at, you know, engaging, uh, you know, local population, whether that might be through some sort of a public consultation or whatnot. Um, that's yet to obviously be decided, but those sorts of strategies would be, would be looked at in the next phase of, of the project.
Thank you for that. Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead with follow-up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank, thank you for the explanation. It's good. The reason why I bring it up now is because this project does need to happen. I totally agree. Uh, and I think we all do, like, this is one of the most important things, if not the most important thing that this city council needs to tackle. Um, the reason I bring it up is because there can be delays or even flat-out rejection of this project if we don't properly follow adequate consultation. And that's the last thing that I would like to see. So I just wanted to bring it up now to just make sure that it's on the forefront of everybody's mind because we want to have as little hurdles completing this project as possible. And I think adequate consultation is one way to do that.
Counselor Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to see the, the unnamed lake work continuing side by side with the, with the new feasibility study. I'm, I'm just wondering if those results are favorable and I'm looking forward to, to seeing them. Will there be a pre-feasibility study done on potentially using that as a temporary stopgap measure until we have a, a more permanent, long-term solution? I just, you know, hearing 2026 during a major housing crisis where we need development right away, while we're a dry season or a major pipe breakaway from a full-stop development order. There's not going to be any way to meet the needs of our residents if we can't build new housing within the next five years. So I, I'm just, I'm hoping that there might be a way, if the unnamed lake results are favorable, to have a, you know, a, a parallel path to a temporary measure to use that source while we deal with a more long-term solution.
Yes, all, uh, all of the above, um, will be looked at as part of the schedule. Um, alternatives, options and so on to, to solve the water problem as soon as possible.
Counselor Awah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think my, uh, my technical question here is that, um, do we have engineers working on this? Not my first question, but, um, if not, uh, are we going to put it out in, um, advertisement saying that we need someone to look at how we can, uh, figure out um, getting water from, um, Silver Granal or water from the unknown lake? Um, so it's sort of a model. Um, are we gonna, uh, see the model that before we can, um, proceed? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Amy.
Uh, yes, we have engineers working on this project. Um, we've. The next phase of the project, we will be, um, putting that out as a competitive process to do the next phase, uh, the next study. Um, to look, uh, further into the unnamed lake as the source. Um, as, and, uh, as, as, as one of the options. Um, and so engineers are working on that. Um, we've had engineering reports done on the actual, um, on the storage option, um, which was selected, uh, last fall, I think it was. Um, and this will all be, um, described to council, um, at the presentation to, uh, to move forward with the recommendation of either the unnamed lake or the Silver Granal River as the supply.
And so I guess further to Counselor Awah's question, you had suggested that within the month at a council meeting, we're going to be asked to decide which of those two sources we want to proceed with. I would suggest that we are going to need some significant discussion before that. So we would need to plan for that on that council meeting or perhaps we have discussion first and then a, a council meeting following, we, we work on the decision. Maybe this, this, there may be quite a lot of question, uh, regarding the results of those two studies. Are there other questions related to, uh, the long-term water supply verbal update that was just given? Counselor Natak, go ahead.
Italna apakuturo ngitugura. Okosanata. Ilan tamunna ikerikunga pangnatanatilinbi itivayane ilanvalleya.
Thank you, Counselor Nataq. If there are no other questions, we can move on to item C on the agenda. That's a request for decision, the operations center application for funding, and again, it will be Amy who will present. Sure. Just bear with us one moment. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. So the city of Ikaluit requires a facility to house its inventory, materials and supplies, water, sewer equipment, heavy equipment. And of course, a long term solution for its operations department. I'm going to speak to this a little later, but we recently received a report for the for our old warehouse, the old Coke plant. And this facility has been deemed unfit for occupancy in its current state. We do have a temporary solution, but we require this long term facility for the city's efficient operation of the city's the city's operations. In the twenty twenty one spending capital spending plan approved by council, six million dollars was allocated for the construction of the new operations center. This facility is slated to be built next to the city garage on the federal roadside. The design has been completed. Cost estimates were obtained and a tender bid document review is underway, as well as an energy model that we're expecting to be completed this year. And we consider this project to be shovel ready, which means that in the event that all of the funding were to be made available and third party funding comes through, that the city could proceed very quickly. We do anticipate a funding program that one would would be rolled out to fund the balance of this project to allow us to proceed with construction. We have received information on a new federal initiative, the Green and Inclusive Building Program, which we have completed a questionnaire and a business plan for the government of Nunavut for this project. And we are recommending today that construction proceed once the funding from the other levels of government is secured, which we're hoping would be next year. Some advantages of deferring this construction to twenty two twenty twenty two include that the city would be able to acquire remaining funds for this project to ensure that we are fully funded. Working towards the completion of the federal road water and sewer, which will service the new operations center, including fire suppression to protect the city's assets in the event of a fire. And to eliminate the need for fire suppression tanks. This would keep the cost down. So let's mitigate the COVID nineteen escalation costs and supply concerns that we're starting to be concerned about. And also, we have been able to secure warehouse space and a sublease from the government of Nunavut for three years. So disadvantages is that we would incur some lease expenses until such time as the facility is built. And there might be some lost opportunity costs for efficiencies and services. I've listed some connections to our strategic plan for this project overall. We're estimating this project at about sixteen million dollars, of which the city has secured six million. And so I'm recommending that the city start construction of the operations center, once funding from the other levels of government is secured, to fund the balance for the construction costs.
Thank you, Amy. There's a motion to recommend to council that from Counselor Shepherd. Is there a second or to that motion? Mayor Bell seconds. Are there comments or questions for Amy on this request for decision? Because I could just look down here and it would tell me if there was. Noting none, all in favor. Perfect, unanimous. We're moving on then to item D on the agenda. That's structural assessments, a verbal update from Amy. Go ahead, Amy.
So as I just mentioned, the city is in the process of relocating out of the old Coke plant building. The city is currently using this building for the functions that I mentioned earlier, but equipment, storage. We've got heavy equipment in there, cities, inventory, majority of the city's inventory. A lot of different building supplies and a lot of other materials. So at the end of twenty twenty, a structural assessment was completed of the building. And the engineering report recommending the building not be occupied in its current condition. We implemented a number of safety and control measures to allow us to access the building until the supplies, inventory and and equipment can be relocated. We have managed to secure a warehouse space at two different locations. And the the larger warehouse is the is a sublease with the government of Nunavut Department of CGS, and we're very grateful to them for their assistance in helping us with the with securing this property. So this is a three year lease and and that's a building on Ulu Lane. And the other lease is with the airport. It's an airport lease with EDNT. And that's in one of the orange warehouse buildings near the old airport. And that will be used for the utilitarian department. And that that lease is only for a year, about a year and a half. We do expect the larger warehouse building thirteen fifty to be ready for occupancy next month. We've ordered the shelving and so on for for that building on Sea Lift. And as soon as we can start moving out of the Coke plant, we will do that. So I just wanted to make you aware of that issue. And our goal is to completely, I guess, remove all of the city's materials and so on from that facility by summertime.
Perfect. Thank you, Amy. Other questions regarding this? Noting none. Thank you very much for the update.
I have two more.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, this is the second one. There's three. Also, a number of cracks in drywall and concrete blocks were recently discovered in building nine oh one of the Arneetuk complex. So the city recently undertook a structural assessment of that building as well. And right now, we are conducting a monitoring program with measurement devices. Further investigation will be completed later in the year. Well, there's no immediate concerns. It is important that this this is monitored. And there will be more in depth review next year. Questions on that one? One more. A couple of weeks ago, some settling and the misalignment of the floor in the dressing room side of the Arctic Winter Games complex was identified. So this is not the ice pad that was redone. This is on the the change room side. Here is noted specifically the janitor's room, the showers, and this sewage lift pump station underneath the building, under the janitor's closet. So the city is in the process of engaging a structural engineer to conduct an assessment there. To make sure that we're addressing those issues as well.
Thank you, Amy, and I think you were specific, but just for clarity, when we did repair the sinking floor at the Arctic Winter Games, we it was only under the ice sheet, and so this is not part of the building that we repaired in two thousand and whatever it was?
That is correct. The the other areas of the building are on piles. And at the time, I guess, the the only issue was the the arena pad, which was not on a on a pile or thermosiphon foundation. So that entire pad was replaced and is on piles now into the bedrock.
Thank you. Are there other questions about the structural update of our buildings? Okay, noting none, we will go on to a verbal update, item E, Waste Management Project. Amy, I think you have update, a high level update first, and then you can respond to questions from earlier on in the evening as well.
Thank you. Okay, so this project, the solid waste project consists of the new waste transfer station, which will be located at the where the old fire training grounds are. And also, the new landfill, which is northwest of City of Ikaluit, as well as the road that leads to that future landfill. And of course, this is to accommodate future waste generation projects for the city of Ikaluit and to decommission the old landfill. The years, the execution years for this project are from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three. The progress to date is that the 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 design and landfill have recently reached completion for both of those. And this design is currently under review by the for the Nunavut Water Board as part of the city's water license amendment process. The road to the Northwest Deposit, the construction has started for that road, as mentioned briefly earlier. And will continue, I believe, in May, so we'll be getting a new schedule for this season. And the contractor is expected to remobilize in May for the rest of the road, to get the rest of the road completed. So for twenty twenty one, there'll be some design updates based on comments received from the Water Board as part of the Water License Amendment process. We do need to obtain that water license from the Water Board or the recommendation from the Water Board to for the recommendation from CERN. Tender construction activities at the waste transfer station and landfill to begin construction. And to, as I mentioned, complete that that road. We do have some some challenges and some risks. Risk mitigating measures to share with you. So we do have approval from the NWB regarding the Water License Amendment. The minister's review of that file did begin on March fifteenth. I just want to note, though, this review period can take up to ninety days, which would bring us into June, so we're hoping for a decision earlier than that to allow us to tender. Because our risk right now is we're concerned about the timing and the ability to to get that tender out early enough so that the work can start this year on the waste transfer station and landfill, especially the waste transfer station. So we are hoping that we can get this approval done as soon as possible. Council did approve change yesterday to the consultant's work, which would help, which will help move this whole project along, but really, we're waiting on the final approvals right now. So that is a concern of ours is the timing. If we don't, we're concerned again that if we don't get these tender documents out in the next month, that we'll miss the construction season entirely this year and delay the project quite a bit. So that's something that we're working through now to see if there's anything we can do to see if the minister's office can can move that along. But to date, we've we've done our best to answer all of the questions from the regulators and so on. There are a couple of conditions that the city has to work through with our consultants, that some conditions, but we see, we don't see that as a hindrance to the project at all. So we're just waiting on the final approvals. So that is kind of the overview for that that project. I may not be able to answer all of the detailed questions tonight, but if there are questions I can't answer, I'll look into it with our PMs and consultants and and I could send an email update.
Thank you, Amy. In terms of the ninety day period waiting for approval, are we just sitting back and waiting? Or have we made it clear to them how the urgency of of that advance notice for that?
Thank you. So there's initial forty, so we had, there is an initial forty five day period, but then we did learn that the the minister can, I guess, extend that for another forty five days, so that's where the ninety days comes from. We have, we are getting a letter drafted to to the minister's office from CERN to stress the importance of this, so the PMs and consultants are working on that right now in hopes of getting that out this week so that we can hopefully move this along, so that they understand the urgency. Unlike other other southern jurisdictions, we rely on Sea Lift. And and our seasons are for building are much shorter, and we have these constraints that we have to work through. And sometimes southern jurisdictions don't always realize these constraints. So we really want to make sure that we can proceed with tendering this project this year.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Amy? Perfect. Noting none, we will go to the final agenda item. F on the agenda, sewer upgrade project, core area along the Mivik Street and Alangoa Street to Akilik Drive. And I believe Cameron is going to speak to this. Cameron, welcome.
Hi, thank you. So just to give a background, we recently completed a capacity assessment for the existing sanitary infrastructure. There is a four phase plan to address the capacity issues that the city of Ikaluit's facing in the downtown core leading to the wastewater treatment plant. So this is phase two. Phase one was completed last year towards the end of November. And this aims to address the barrier infrastructure between Four Corners intersection and just beyond the disco, Alangoa Street. The goal of this project is to upsize that sanitary sewer main as well as address localized drainage issues as well. There will also be a small component of water main that will be upsized. Uh there will also be a small component of water main that will be upsized um to address some freeze-up that that has happened in that area. That's that's the basic scope of this project. So uh I guess to also give some background, it's out for tender right now. Um it's set to close, I believe, the twenty-first of April.
Can you expand on what you meant by addressing localized drainage issues?
Uh yes, so we also had a master drainage plan put together by New Miami Stan Tech. Um and they've laid out a five-year master drainage plan. Um so in that area, there have been issues, especially at Four Corners with drainage. Uh this project seeks to install new culverts crossing that road uh to provide drainage from the R- RBC building uh across to um across the road from there, uh west, headed west, and then down along the north side of Mivik Street. Um so that should relieve some of the spring runoff that we're seeing even this week. Um it was, uh there was quite a bit of water there. And that's that's the goal of the drainage work in that area.
And just, I guess, sort of out of curiosity, do we see the drain, the so the lack of drainage that currently exists? The lack of proper drainage as a threat to some of this underground infrastructure as well? Does it, do they end up relating to each other?
Uh the drainage issues will have more of an impact on surface-level infrastructure, so um causing potholes and other uh road-related issues or walkway-related issues. Um which, of course, has an impact on the public. Uh access by vehicle or by foot uh could be heavily impacted by by drainage issues. Um the buried infrastructure itself uh does not directly relate to that um scope of work, but this is an opportunity to do that work in parallel and um take the opportunity to to basically fix both issues at once.
Sorry to harp on drainage, but it's something that I care a lot about. Uh I know up by the water treatments, uh no, the water pumping station on the way past the hospital. We used to have significant drainage issues there too, and it was fixed with something I think is called a swale, but was where the pavement curves out on the side of the road a bit like that. Uh I know that in other places, like concrete sidewalks are used as part of the drainage control. Uh like, so the lip of a sidewalk actually helps with road drainage. What what technique are we intending to use to, uh you you mentioned the culverts. Is there any other techniques, like surface techniques, that we're intending to use to manage the drainage?
So on this particular project, the scope only captures um buried infrastructure. Uh and typically, we would take that opportunity if the sanitary lines were in the roadway to do a full road reconstruction as well. In this particular instance, the sanitary lines run in the north end of the road in front of the Legion. Which means that we won't be tearing up too much asphalt, uh we won't be doing a full road reconstruction. Uh so it will be localized efforts to basically divert drainage. Um so some asphalt work will be done in trouble locations. And other than that, we're mainly doing ditching and culverts to aid in uh road crossings and things of that nature. Uh on some of the projects going forward in future years. Um so next year, this will be a continuation headed up uh Nyakongus Yariak Road towards Apex. Um we may see more roadworks, but it just depends on the alignment. Um we will probably try to address roadworks in future years. Um if we complete paving projects in those areas.
Thank you for that. Are there other questions? Councillor Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I I know we're gonna talk about sewer issues and at a meeting in the future, but um will this fix here allow us to have some new development without the need for um timed release or pumpouts, or is there just a significant number of other um pinch points in the sewage line that's gonna require the uh, you know, a timed release or pumpout for new developments?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Um in the design for this section. Um it's hard to, it's hard to give a real indication without showing a map. Um which I can provide uh separately, but um this will alleviate some of the need for timed pumpouts and things of that um nature. Uh not immediately with this phase of the project, but the goal is that as we move up the line, basically starting from the wastewater treatment plant headed outwards, we will begin up sizing everything. Um so by the time we get to the third phase next year and the fourth phase of this project, uh that should alleviate that. Uh our goal is completely, and then to allow for future development as well. The designs are not just being done for current demands, but projected demands as well.
Go ahead.
Just a brief follow-up, this for question for anybody, because it's something I don't personally know. Um you know, as we're upgrading these pipes, that just, you know, planning for the future, I just wonder what capacity does the wastewater treatment plant have? Like what size population estimate can I call it support based on our fancy new, almost-commissioned solid or wastewater treatment?
Amy?
I'm just gonna ask Joseph if he's able to look that up for us. We know we have the information. If he has a minute, if he's able to.
Uh I'll see if I can. Uh you might need to give me some time, but I'll see if I could pull that up. Give me a second.
If if you can't, it would be fine. You could also send it an email to Amy and she can circulate it to the to the council.
If anything, maybe what 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 we could do, yeah, I'll I'll, Amy, I'll I'll pull that information and we could circulate it afterwards to to the council members.
That that sounds great. Thank you, Joseph. Go ahead, Amy.
Um I was just wondering, Cameron, if you'd be able to share with us the stakeholder engagement plan that you've been uh working on? And um because we know there'll be a lot of impacts down here too, especially the businesses down in this area.
Uh yes, so along with this project, we're developing a stakeholder engagement list. We've reached out to all of the business owners uh and land leaseholders to um participate in a stakeholder engagement. Basically to provide any of their concerns or uh feedback throughout the construction project. Um things like what they'd like to see done as a final product. Um within reason, what we can accommodate, uh as well as to keep them informed throughout the project. Because uh on something of this scale, it's important to keep lines of communication open. Uh we don't want stakeholders left in the dark or without access to their business. Um which I've seen on other projects can get um a little bit messy. So our goal as a city is to keep everybody informed and in the loop. Um with that being said, we will also hold a public information session um the twenty-eighth of April from six to nine uh here, as well as available through Zoom uh or conference call. Um just to provide a background of the project, uh what people can expect as far as um traffic detour routes, because there will be a couple of road closures, um whether it be one lane, uh two lane, um or or just kind of overnight work as a potential solution to some of the major works that will be impacting things like Sea Lift, um boating season, access to the gas bar, access to business fronts, uh foot traffic, just to name a few examples. Um so that presentation will be held again on the twenty-eighth, and it's starting to come together. Um I'll have that out for translation shortly. And um I hope to see anybody that's interested there, um but we'll be putting a PSA out for that. If it's not already out, I can't remember.
Thank you very much for that response. Councillor Shepherd, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I'm looking forward to that public consultation. I just don't want to wait, so I just, I'm wondering if you could um talk a little bit about the impact, like if you're talking about putting a new culvert in under the road at Four Corners, that means we're gonna tear up one of the four streets coming into Four Corners, blocking off that intersection. Significant ditching down the road. Um I'm just wondering, is this gonna be done in sections? Is the entire thing gonna be ditched at one point in time? And most importantly, what is the anticipated impact on boating season?
Uh those are all gr- great questions, especially the the last one there. Um so for Four Corners, for example, our approach might differ from the next intersection headed west in front of the disco and the gas bar there, uh in the Nova. So for that particular intersection, we'll likely do a full road closure and try to get that section done in one day. Um we'll we'll tactically do that on a weekend to avoid impacting too much rush hour um traffic for businesses and and people trying to get to and from work. Um whereas for the next intersection along there, we will have to look at different options, doing partial road closures. Uh directing detours down side roads and things like that. Um some of that, some of that has to be left up to the contractor. Uh but they do have to provide their road closure details in advance and they are reviewed. Um we do have a heavy input as to what is allowable. Um so again, in that particular intersection, it's a pretty funny crossing. Um it'll probably be one lane at a time, and as I mentioned before, there's a potential for night work to really avoid having a an significant impact on traffic. Um the ditching primarily is along the northern side of Mivik Street, and then by the time it gets to uh that three-way intersection in front of the disco. Um we're kind of out of the woods, the majority of that ditching is in that section. Um and then the impact of boating season, as well as Sea Lift, those are the two main challenges that we're facing, I'll say. Uh within those traffic control plans and detour routes and things like that. Um it will have to be included in detail. Uh whether or not we'll make one-way streets for for people to pull through, gas up and and move along, things like that. Uh with Sea Lift, we'll probably have a permanent uh route that we expect all Sea Lift operations to take. Um to accommodate for the construction, so um I hope that answers your questions a little bit further. Uh I wish I could provide full details and and maps already, uh but those are still in the process of being uh formulated.
Thank you very much for that response. Are there other questions? Councillor Nata, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Naomi.
Did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, sure. So uh I would agree with that entirely. That's the goal. Is to keep everybody informed of what the new detours will be, especially as construction is ongoing. Um there will probably be multiple phases of road closure and more than one detour uh that have to be implemented at different times. Um those roads that you mentioned will be used in those detour routes. Um and once again, released in a sequence as the construction project continues along.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, Cam, I thank you for presenting to us tonight. That was great, uh informative.
Thanks.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mayor Bell, seconded by councillor Awal, all those in favor, woo-hoo. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Thanks, everyone. That was good. Very informative.